I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel matter, the superintendent's evaluation, and a contract issue. Motion from Kristen, second by Eric. All those in favor? Four. Yep. That's four.
Welcome everyone. I need a motion to open our public meeting. We're returning from executive session. Diane and Kristen, thank you so much. I need all those in favor. We are how many?
Six.
Six to vote. Okay. We are back in public session. Thank you so much. And now we need to start with the pleasure. My student, Molly, she's gone.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin with administrative remarks. Anything you'd like to start? Can I? Sure. It's your last. Gosh, I can't. Who wants to go? Good evening, everyone. There's a few probationary recommendations for probationary appointments this evening I'd like to mention. One is Mr. Paul Stalagi to Assistant Director for Personnel Services. Lauren and Ariary, Special Education Teacher at Wells. Eliza Love, Social Worker at the high school. And Melissa Hunter, Paddock to a full-time teaching assistant at the high school. Anything else? Thank you. I just keep slurring. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Hi. Good afternoon. Just a couple of quick updates. So, we were informed this past September that the New York State Controller's Office would be in the district performing audit. They perform audits of schools and other local governments once every five years. Our five-year cycle began this year. The auditors have just arrived in district this month, so they'll be here for the next three months, performing their audit. Facilities news, the SOD should be installed on the baseball field this week. The delivery was scheduled for this morning, however, due to all the rain and obviously got pushed back, we expect the SOD to be installed throughout the rest of this weekend and through the weekend. And again, I just want to wish Valerie and Kathy good luck. Good luck in the future. And thank Kristen and Diane for their service on the board of students. And I think that's my comments.
Now if I say, "I was going to say that," but that's one. So, in addition to that, I would just like to thank everyone who served on all of our committees and task forces and advisory groups this year, all teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, community members. I feel really, really good about the high-quality and collaborative work that was done across content areas and grade levels. And it was nice to know that those groups were able to play a supporting role in moving students learning forward. So, I know this quality work will continue, and new work will begin, and I'm excited about what it all means for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I want to congratulate and thank Mrs. O'Brien and Mrs. DeKalb for all their service to this school district. You've been through construction bonds, you've contributed to the adoption of the education plan. Everything that's happened has been positive. So, I know that you, your involvement and your dedication to children, so I just want to thank you publicly for all that you've done to make this district where it is. Thank you. Congratulations, Mrs. DeKalb, over there, for all of your tireless service as well to this school district. You've been an amazing asset to the district and to all of the employees, and I'm sure everyone will miss you, but you've left your legacy behind, so thank you so much. Another congratulations to Mr. Roble-Lalbo and Mrs. Semby-Loosso, who are the advisors to the famous Fairfax. And they received recognition and honor, placing second place nationally for the quality of the Fairfax. That's really outstanding. And so, they deserve all the praise assigned to this, but we have some, again, another example of really terrific students doing really amazing work that's recognized nationally. The other is to Mrs. Jennifer Gary, who's our Communication Specialist that started this year as a consultant from the Putnam Norton Westchester Bosys. She's here two days a week. And the two days a week, she ended up with writing, you know, receiving two awards for stories covered in the district. Happened to be, both stories happened to be from wonderful events at HH12's Middle School, both the grandparents' day planned, as well as the student-led effort to eliminate plastic waste. So, congratulations to all, and happy summer to everyone.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to echo the sentiments, and we'll speak more, I'll speak more later, and just that there are many end-of-year activities that are on, collaboration is great as always, and I thought this year, we just went so smoothly. We just, I feel like, just addressed everything and honored the kids and all their accomplishments, and it was just really nice to see. Yeah, so that's it. More coming. So, I think we can move on to our presentations. Recognition and discussion. First up is recognition of PTA/PTSA leadership. Dr. Henry.
Administrazione and children. Come on up, Jane. PTA/PTSA executive. Come up here, please. These incredible leaders are, have done incredible, an incredible amount of work this year on behalf of children. I get the pleasure of meeting with them once a month, where I hear all the things that they do and wonder how much time they have to spend with their families. Because whatever the children need, fundraising, or helping in the building, appreciations, the lore, you know, they're doing it. And they're doing it sometimes with not a lot of help. Sometimes people sign up, but they don't show up to help them. But I want to make sure that, you know, you understand how much we appreciate you for all that you have been doing and you continue to do. Because if we didn't have you doing these things, many of them wouldn't happen. So, this is just a little bit of a token appreciation from those schools who benefit. So, we have people here who are going to shower the different PTA/PTSA presidents with some, as I said, tokens of appreciation. So, who are we starting with? This will be, this current. Big horn. Got it? Want to say thank you from CB's jar. Thank you so much.
For both Jessica and Jessica, I'm going to leave these here to a little heading, because they contain our children went to work, and gave their homework, and I just want to sort of both of you in these baskets. So, thank you very much. Please, hold your hand. I'll help you. Thank you for everything you've done this year, and for having part of your community. I truly appreciate everything that you've done.
HH12, that's 07.
How do you do, Brian?
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Mrs. Horner can be here tonight. I'm the head of our high school, and I'd like to thank Horner for all of your partnership. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. So, Kristen, you've been our fearless executive leader, and we're so happy and grateful for all that you did to support us, our department, and you were able to provide a lot of meaningful outreach to the parents, and we're grateful for all that you've done and helped us to take back. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, we are just amazed by how much work you guys do for us. You're like everywhere. Every time we turn around, I'm like getting an email about a car wash, or can we sell, we sell stuff at your school functions, so that we can raise money to get back to your kids. Sure, you can do that. You know, can we provide lunches or gifts for the kids? Showing up before they could, all the kids went off to Washington DC with goodie bags to give to everybody. Showing up the night before to set everything up, so that, you know, those kids could be appreciated before they left. So, we are abundantly in appreciation of all the work you do and amazed by it.
So, I said, "Forget it. Just speak from the heart," because there was just too much to say.
So, thank you.
I think that that completes it.
So, I'll start with Diane. And I have to say that the public really should know that, well, for both of you,
Aside from anything that the board would like to say to this amazing thing?
honestly, you both truly fought for what's right for children every step of the way. Just, yes, thank you, of course. You both challenged the group with your opinions and your philosophies, and I think
Yeah, I would just say, I know too, that I think at the high school, that there are positions open for, and probably at other schools too.
that it made for very rich conversations, sometimes combative conversations, but I
So, I think it's nice to encourage other people to get involved, because a lot of
think that it is important, because it makes us really evaluate that we are doing right
the same faces year after year on PTA, and it's a big commitment.
by all kids in the district and representing our community.
So, there are spots available, so I would suggest reaching out to them, so that PTA
So, yeah, and then specifically, so for Diane, I have to say that I don't know what
continues.
Thank you. I'm going to do without you. Thank you so much. Diane has been my memory many times.
Now we move on to recognition.
When you're juggling a lot of things, I would just look to her and say, like, "What was that?" And she was always there to just be my support. And thank you.
As for the other trustees, Kristen, Diane, and Brian.
I'm truly going to miss you and your help and your guidance, as I know we all will. And Kristen, we're going to be lost when it comes to a lot of things that keep us on track and the reminders that we need. It really takes every personality that sits at this table, you know, to bring that uniqueness, to make us all work together. And, you know, you both definitely brought your piece to this puzzle. And I truly am grateful and thankful, and I'm sad to see both go, and I know the district will be lost without you for a little bit, but hopefully, you know, we will get going forward. Anyway, so thank you on behalf of the board and the district. And that may all just be, but this says, so presented to Kristen, Kristen, and appreciation of your devotion and service to the children of the Brewster Central School District as Board of Education trustee, Brewster Board of Education, June 2019. Senator May.
It's been an honor and a privilege to serve this district. It was a great experience. I am happy that I can walk away knowing the district is slightly better than what I thought. So, thank you.
I will echo those sentiments and say thank you to fellow trustees and the staff and the district administrators and parents and community members, but mostly students, who I believe, you know, I don't want to speak through Diane, but that's who we are here for. And it has been a privilege to serve the community, so thank you.
I think there are more presents, so you have to get up.
You want to switch sides now?
Oh, so sweet. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. That is awesome.
This is great.
There's more. There's more.
We have something from our creative arts class that was made for you. So, thanks to thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Thank you so much.
On behalf of the high school.
Oh, yay. Everyone loves to swag.
So, you're going to get some official super-duper coaching wear. Mr. Clark is jealous, because I'm very stingy to give him this outfit. And thank you for all the effort for athletics and for, you know, me personally, and for all the important basketballs. I want you to official coach short, Brewster T-shirt. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been wonderful.
Of course, I just want to thank you on behalf of JFK, because we did do a lot over the last few years. And those members who were here during that time, there were times personally when we literally gutted that building. And I'm standing there in the evening and looking around and saying, "I don't know how we're going to do this," you know, and then coming back and saying, "We're coming to visit. Okay, we're going to do this, we're going to do this." It was a shot in the arm. And I keep me going every day. So, I want to thank you on behalf of JFK, with the support from the board, for everything you've done to get us through what was unprecedented in the world of school construction. So, I want to thank you for all the support you've given us over the years. And personally, thank you very much for everything you've done. Thank you.
So, I'm going to just veer off this for just one moment, just because I know by the end of the meeting, we may leave. And we just wanted to give Susan. I know, well, that's the whole thing. You're never called out, right? You're there, and you work so hard. You do so much for us and for the district. I mean, I don't think people realize that you really are the glue. I mean, without you, I don't know how we function sometimes. So, we just wanted to say thank you as well for all that you do for us, and just a small little thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone does stay after the meeting, so he'll be at the door giving out.
Perfect. So, now we move on to residency verification update. Mr. Holston.
Board members. Administrators and members of our extended Brewster family. Tonight, I have an update for our residency verification program, which started last year, a little bit before I signed on. For those of you who don't know me, and I think I know almost everybody in here, my name is Art Holston. I'm the residency officer at Brewster Central Schools. You might know me in my other position before, when I was still a teacher. That was several years ago. Let me move into the numbers for the board members as we're moving forward. Previously, we gave you these numbers of originally, start of the year, we had 3,001 students in our beds enrollment forms, 145 out-of-district students who are not included in the beds. So, we had 3,146 students in the school district as of October 3rd. Now that, obviously, it fluctuates a little bit here and there, and we'll talk a little bit about that closer to the end. Before I came on board, we had already established 2,601 students, reestablished their residency through them bringing in their documentation. During the time, right before I came on board and when I was on board, we were able to verify another 132 students through record searches. And if we couldn't do that, we also had surveillance going on, covert surveillance through January 4th. Since then, I've been able to verify another 341 students, again, using these different various search methods and covert surveillance through our private investigation firm. This gives us at this moment a number of 3,074, which is approximately 98% of our school district. Maybe a little bit, you know, tend to round it down. However, of those 3,074, we still have 15 of those who are on what we would call a watch list. For the most part, they're on the watch list because of some kind of tip that was given to us, whether it be from a school district employee or just an outside person sometimes will let us know that, you know, so-and-so is not their neighbor anymore, but they're still in our school. Or they might drop off their student with a Connecticut license plate or something of that nature. So, there are 15 still on the watch list. Now, of the remaining verifications that we still have out, 72 have not, you know, completed their residency. Either they haven't given us all the documentation, or perhaps none of the documentation. And of course, we have those 15 students who are listed as verified, but they're still on our watch list. So, that's 87 students as of June 12th remaining. That's when we did the presentation. Of those 87, 67 students are still being verified through database searches. It just takes a little bit of time to run through all of this. 20 students, however, are also being verified through covert surveillance. We've already looked at their record searches and haven't come up with verification, haven't come up, it hasn't told us enough to say whether or not they actually live in the district or not. So, those 20 students are, we're doing covert surveillance now to see if, in fact, they are in the district. For this school year, we've had five students excluded as non-residents, again, through a lengthy process. This does not include 190 students who voluntarily disenrolled since July 1st of last year. And like I said, 207, we've had 207 new students enrolled in that same period, so that's why the actual numbers, we only had, we actually had a net gain of 17 in our district. We had 17 more students than we did at the beginning of the year. There are still some people that are, again, under investigation, who might appear that we're having a hard time saying that they're in our district. So, they're, that process, again, takes a little bit of time, because we're disproving them. They're saying they live, and we have to go out and say, "No, we don't." So, that takes time, and it's a lengthy process that we have to go through from one step to another. So, having said that, we will continue the residency verification over the summer, and we hope to have concluded the last 87 of those students by sometime early in September, and so we can have a final verification update at the beginning of next school year sometime. So, moving forward, we will complete, or I will complete, this residency verification right to 100%. Again, I hope in the early fall next year, we should be done. I'll report again to the board when we're totally done. After I'm totally done with the residency verification, I will, of course, continue on to enforce our regulations for district verification, for residency verification. I'll enforce our Board of Education policies that govern whether you live in the district or not, and all the procedures that we set in place this year for determining your residency. And we've also discussed recently, considering the board asking for an audit of the program itself, to verify the results and make sure that we're doing the best job we can at verifying the students, which I believe we are. And that's it.
I just have a question.
Yes.
The five students who were excluded, I know that there's some sort of, if a determination is made as to a student, that there's some sort of appeal process that is available to this school?
Yes, there is.
That isn't to us? Right, it goes like to the commissioner or something?
Right, it's right.
So, these, are there more, I guess, are there appeals?
Yes.
Okay. So, that wouldn't be included in the five? If we're waiting on determinations from?
No, it might be included. Some of those might be still appealed.
Okay, okay.
I could actually answer that.
Okay, thanks.
Those include, or those five are only students who have been excluded and have not appealed.
Okay.
There are a few that have been excluded that have appealed, which are not reflected in that number, because the appeal is still pending.
And pending the appeal, they remain in the district?
Correct.
Yes.
And then when you say a few, do you mean like under five?
Under five.
Okay.
So, the previous slide there, so of the 87, 67 students are being verified through public record searches?
That's correct.
Not asking for a definite number, I know that this is a fluid situation. Do you expect all 67 of them to eventually have to go through the covert surveillance in order to move to a determination?
No, no. I would say probably it's a 60/40. 60% will be verified at the public record search, 40% will be.
Okay. And, so, the last, the final, the bottom bullet point, there's still students under surveillance who appear to be non-residents?
Yes.
Where are they are, that's, we're talking about the 20 and that above bullet point, that's what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and they're also on the watch list as well.
How much has this cost us thus far? Do we know a general number?
Yeah, this was discussed at the task force meeting. Year to date, we've spent about $160,000 on the residency verification program. And at this point, moving forward, because, you know, as we understood the process before we even began, you know, getting to the end is the most time-consuming and most expensive part of the process, because at this point, you know, families are either unable or unwilling to come in to provide documentation, which, you know, requires the district having to prove through surveillance that students are non-residents. So, it's $160,000 to date, and, you know, if we just, you know, assume that the cost of surveillance on the remaining students is maybe, I mean, I don't know, could be another $50,000 to $75,000 to conclude the program, which is slightly less than what the initial estimate was back in August of 2018.
So, the audit, what would be the next steps for that?
So, any audit would have to go out to request for proposal, or we would have to seek internal audit firms.
Yes, and they're also on the watch list as well.
How much has this cost us thus far? Do we know a general number?
Yeah, this was discussed at the task force meeting. Year to date, we've spent about $160,000 on the residency verification program. And at this point, moving forward, because, you know, as we understood the process before we even began, you know, getting to the end is the most time consuming and most expensive part of the process because at this point, you know, families are either unable or unwilling to come in to provide documentation, which, you know, requires the district having to prove through surveillance that students are non-residents. So it's $160,000 to date and, you know, if we just, you know, assume that the cost of surveillance on the remaining students is maybe, I mean, I don't know, could be another $50,000 to $75,000 to conclude the program, which is slightly less than what the initial estimate was back in August of 2018.
Thank you. So the audit, what would be the next steps for that?
So, and any audit would have to go out to request for proposal or we would have to seek internal audit firms, ask for and that type of work. So we could draft an RFP and put it out, but it would probably be in our best interest to wait until the very end because as we, you know, again, as we knew that, you know, the remaining students are the ones that were either unable or unwilling. So I think we should wait and see, you know, what happens with these students or at least wait, you know, allow the field work to take into account these students rather than begin an audit before we finish, is my opinion.
And I agree, I think, the only thought that I have to that is, I mean, I would say, you know, let's see where we're at September 1st if you were to look at the date, because we do know, one case can take eight months. So for some, there may be no end in sight. The appeals, that's another year, we don't know, right? So I would, I would say that, you know, I think over the next few months, we probably can, being that the chunk of the work is gone, even this is more.
Correct.
Right, timely, but I think that we should kind of look at September 1st and at that point, probably go forward with an audit because at that point, I think whatever cases are still lingering are going to be lengthy cases and we could be waiting years. So that would be my thought to just add to that.
I just want to double that a quick here for a minute. What would be the purpose of an audit? This essentially was an audit. This was a residency verification that was an audit of our students as to whether or not they would, they belong in the parameters of the school district. What are we actually going to ask someone who's coming in to review?
I think the same thing that all our audits, to check our work, right? So are we within the law? Are we properly, are we being fair with every single person? You know, are our procedures accurate? You know, we did have the scrutiny of SED on us with the language and the documentation. And they, I think, to now, you know, they trusted that we're doing, they have checked in here and there, but I think it'd be good to have someone unrelated to us just to make sure that we are being compliant and fair and within the law. You know, so I just, again, anything we can, we have our orders that we have for other things in the district.
I think another aspect of this whole program though was how it's going to proceed going forward and the, and the procedures that have been put in place to deal with, you know, maybe a month-to-month tenancies or yearly tenancies or, or five yearly's where it was on its fifth year. And now, okay, now we're in the sixth year, how do we follow up with these people? And to me, I feel like it's premature to audit it because it's not just this initial re-verification, it's the ongoing maintenance of it.
Do you think though, an outside person could, because there has been already some who have updated that kind of information, my only concern would be, I mean, I trust the work that our employees are doing, but what if we're a few years in and we had flaws kind of from day one in our system because it is new to us? And I think that outside, you know, person who maybe has experience with this or whatever districts are doing, I don't know, that can look at us objectively and say, this is, this one will take you here, no, you're right on track, rather than look down a couple years ago, crap, you're just, you know, this or that and we should have done things differently. That's, that's just, I hate to have to go backwards later than look at it a year into it.
How would it work though in terms of an audit? If we were to agree as a board that an audit should be conducted, I'd like to know what that's going to cost before I agree to it. So how is that process?
I would, I would think it would probably cost anywhere between $10,000 and $20,000.
But that would be, the RFP would tell us?
Right, that's the purpose of it because you solicit proposals from different organizations that have the ability to do this, this work. And then, you know, you don't necessarily need to choose the lowest, you know, responder, but the most qualified and hopefully the lowest.
I, I agree with what you're saying, I just feel like, I mean, I do understand the point you're making Sonia and I do realize that this isn't for future board to continue the discussion. I just, I assume to be a, just a community member, I do feel that this is a little bit premature. I'd give it even another year to see how it plays out with incoming students because we do know we're going to get a flux of students and we're going to have students disenroll over the summer to see how the policies play out this coming year. I would just caution jumping into an audit immediately when it's so brand new, but that's my two cents on it.
I think the other side of it though is that process, as we started it, according to these numbers, is 98% complete. So there is an ongoing aspect to this. Obviously, we are setting policy and procedure as we go forward, but the work that we've done so far, I mean, we've gone through over 3,000 students. I mean, are we going to wait for if 207 new students come in and how we enroll them? I mean, this, this particular policy of verifying the residency of people who are here, I don't think we need to wait one or two years for that. I think that process is nearly over, but continues sort of once this particular program is done and we've gone through everybody, it changes a little bit, it becomes a little bit, it's more maintenance, but there was a lot of work that had to be accomplished. And I would definitely be interested in seeing if we, how we did, we did spend a lot of money. I think it's reasonable and responsible to make sure that we did it the right way and we continue to do it the right way.
Can we agree to perhaps look at it, like let's say September 1st, when we have, you know, to see where those numbers are at and we can just evaluate that point, what it's looking like and have that conversation at that point?
As the outgoing person, I would say September 1st to take, you know, using September 1st as the date, whatever your first meeting in September is. Look at the process, you want to make sure your policies and your procedures are working and effective and audit's the way that that's done. And to the point of, you know, you don't want to do it too soon, but you also don't want to wait too long either because then you're going to start re-verifying all over again. Whereas this is a fluid, ongoing process that, you know, get rid of the backlog that we had and we need to see if we're in the right direction going forward. So that's my two cents, but obviously you guys can decide that September or whatever.
September 1st.
I'll wait September 2nd, I'll wait to evaluate that point, see where we're at, see how the process has been working and then consider if we want to go ahead and do our process.
Okay, so we'll split it off into that first September meeting. There were just, as a follow-up, a few, if I may, since we do have, also here today, can I, there were a few questions that did come up in the task force and I know that I asked you to look into a couple things. Thank you, sorry. And one of them was, because we do have language in our current paperwork when it comes to guardianship and the required, you know, what's required, not required in terms of a parent showing that they're the parent or the guardian of that child.
Sure. So the commissioner's regulations now and before they were even revised a few weeks ago have always said that you can't require court paperwork showing to prove custody of a child. There are a variety of other ways that you can use to prove it, like the district has parental and custodial affidavits. And in those affidavits, the person is saying, who is providing medical decision-making, educational decision-making, who's providing food, clothing and shelter? These are all aspects that the commissioner would look at in determining whether they agree that the person is or is not the parent or guardian for residency purposes. That might be different in terms of what somebody, a doctor might consider a legal guardian, but for residency purposes, there are some, those factors are what we look at, who's providing health insurance, things like that. So we, the commissioner has ruled consistently, you can't say, you must go to court and get a judge to order that you are the legal guardian of this child for residency purposes.
So I think, if I, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, they don't, I think our language does say to have either an affidavit or a court.
Right, so an affidavit is the other, is the other option. So you can ask for the custody paperwork if it's there because some, a lot of people do have it, but the other option is that affidavit.
And so if they don't provide either, what is, do we, can, so we can't enforce?
Well, if they don't have either, what you could, options that you could do include, a lot of times you'd have a conversation, so you ask, you ask those questions that I just said without, because usually the people don't know the right answer, right? So they're pretty truthful and they'll provide, they'll say, okay, well, mom and dad are still, they're paying me, you know, X number of dollars a month and they're still doing everything and if you have a decision-making, call dad and mom, but, you know, Joey's going to live with me. You know, once we get all those facts behind, very fact-specific, the district can determine that, no, you're not actually, you're not actually the legal guardian, you're just maybe doing this to take advantage of the school district.
So it seems that with that in conjunction with other measures, because it, you know, one thing alone wouldn't, because we do ask for multiple pieces of information.
Absolutely. And because the presumption under the law is that you live with your, you are residing with your parent or guardian and it's their job to override that presumption and prove to us that they're not living with their parent or guardian that they're living with, that they're not living with their biological parent, that they're living with this other guardian.
Right, okay. The other question that came up had to do with housing and I know we've discussed this in the past, but I asked you to talk about it again. In terms of if we know there's a, a single-family home, it's a three-bedroom house, whatever, and three separate families registered to that address, can a district disclose that information under what conditions, could it disclose that information if it could?
Sure. So the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act is the law, the federal law that protects student information. And the law prohibits the district from disclosing personally identifiable information is the phrase that they use unless there are certain exceptions to that. Without parental consent, we can't disclose this information. So disclosing the information that you learn from a student record, including their address, which is one of the definitions of personally identifiable information, would be a violation of FERFA because the only reason that we are, we have that information and we're going to disclose that information is because we've learned it from a student record. So it would be a violation of a student's privacy. There are, one of the exceptions that could potentially come into play in that situation would be if there is a health and safety emergency, but that's a very significant bar to pass. So it would have to be that they, they give the examples of a terrorist threat or an impending natural disaster, those are the situations where there's a significant and articulable threat to the health and safety of a student or people. And in those, in that situation, we could disclose to law enforcement or something. Let's say you, the investigators staking out a house that they're looking into for residency purposes and they see sparks. I mean, we're not going to say, okay, you can't call the cops or you can't, you know, notify somebody because that would be a FERFA violation because there's clearly a health and safety emergency at that point that they might, there might be a fire starting. But just informing them of a potential code violation would, in our opinion, rise the level of a significant and articulable health and safety emergency.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? So any one piece of information, so simply the address is, it doesn't have to be connected to a person, so we don't have to say, this student and this student and this student all registered at the same address. Are we able to just say, this is the address where we have concerns that multiple people more, do you understand?
I understand what you're saying, yeah, no, see, the issue again is that the only reason you have that information is because you're getting it from the student's record. And in addition, when they go to that, you know, home, at that point, they see who lives there, now they can, and the FERFA language would say that it's easily traceable. So now you can easily trace the fact that, okay, this is a student in Brewster and this is where they live and now we disclose that personally identifiable information.
And the third thing that came up, which I don't, we actually have a policy or a language to this, but I think this is something that has come to light in this process, I think like an auditor could have maybe picked up on or could in the future, like things like this. But I think we need language also to help our community, you know, understand how confidentiality works and right now we have anonymous alerts and that's, that is an untraceable way for people to share information. It does, you know, there are always considerations to the information provided because there is no name attached or no contact. So while everything's looked into, there is always that reality when there's a name that of course attached to something, it carries more weight. But I think that would be good for us to have language somewhere in terms of how, you know, the community can share information that they have, being that we are restricted as a school district in what we can do and how we acquire information, we can share information. And just, and I'm not sure exactly what that language needs to be, but I think it'd be something interesting for policy to maybe consider.
Well, that wouldn't be limited to just residency verification, it would be, it would be applied across the board.
Took a follow-up on what you're saying. The only way for someone to be anonymous right now is to use that system.
Anonymous alerts.
Anonymous, that's the only way that could be, you know, truly anonymous in reporting something to the school district at this time.
Technically, yes. I think though, I mean, the concern is, that was raised was that, you know, we do have community members that email us for all types of topics, all kinds of issues. It's from range from teachers to students to residency, you know, and what level of confidentiality can someone reasonably expect? And I, so that's what I'm saying with the policy, we have to have something that talks to, speaks to that. And my understanding, you know, after speaking with our lawyers is that there can, there is, depending on the circumstances and the need for, you know, whatever, there are certain conditions under which information may be shared. And it just, I think that we need to get clarity on how, what that looks like and what the lawyers need to say and so that everyone's just clear. I don't want to have, you know, what we have thought or what could happen or how it should be for any issue. We've had other meetings, people have come out and we've asked them to share information, what do you have? And I think that people probably didn't email us stuff for other kinds of topics, right? And out of that concern. So I think if we just have language of how, you can communicate with us, what are consequences or what can be possible outcomes of type, different types of communication, and let's just get that language done, just my, my thought on that. Anyone else have questions on this report? So I think we can then move on to our next presentation, which is the community board survey. We, oh, that's me, I'm not. Okay, so we, some months ago, we tried something new and exciting and I actually tried to find other boards that did this and I really haven't had much luck, so, you know, pioneering things here. We sent out a survey to the community, just asking five questions about, about the board, what are, were people's thoughts on us and suggestions they had? And it's been a busy couple months, so we're finally getting around to having a work session, we're leaving over this, we're able to review it. So I was just going to give a brief recap on that. What I was thinking as I was going through this and putting it together, you guys, was, I think it would be good for us, for me to put this in like a chart, just maybe the five or 10 top most repetitive, you know, thoughts that came up, maybe, you know, five strengths and weaknesses each that were identified. And then I would say, you know, in another column perhaps put how you've addressed it or how you will be addressing it. And just show that, you know, very specifically that we do take this seriously and we do want to improve what the board does and, you know, the work we do for setting the district. So I'm going to try, so I, there were, I'll do a little brief recap and then I'll try to be short. This is just four pages and there could have been a lot more, we're not going to go through four pages. So only 199 people took in this survey, but it was our first go-around, so I guess that's great. I'm hoping that, you know, we can be sure we can do this again and we can have more participation. It was 75.6% community members, 22.8% employees of the district, 1.6 students, so. It was an anonymous survey and the first category, we asked about people to identify the strengths and weaknesses that they saw in the current board at that time. So this was, well, it's the current board now. And what was interesting though was a lot of comments throughout, it seems like it was the first time that people had an opportunity to say something like this. it was the first time that people had an opportunity to say something like this. So there were a lot of topics that came up that predated this current board. Um, and that's fine because I still, you know, we, we still read that and we took that in and it's still good information because it helps us make sure we, we improve, you know, for the future. And, um, the, let's see, I mean, just to briefly, I'll just say kind of one thing for each question about that. So for strengths, you know, they, well, here's what was interesting. So depending on who the commentator was, we received comments like, you know, we were doing, um, we were finally, we were earning trust, we're heading in the right direction, we were being more transparent, um, you know, we've done a lot of, um, community, offered opportunities for community interaction. And then we, for weaknesses, we got some of those same comments. So that made me think, okay, well, why? So where was the disconnect? Why were some people, you know, thinking? And unfortunately, because I don't know who they are or what aspect of the community, it could be that, you know, perhaps it is that our parents are very well informed because of the texts and the messages and emails and all that. And then of course, employees, because they're through that channel. So it could be that we still have some work to do with the community members that are not attached to those forms of communication. You know, one of the things I was thinking, we talked about it, is perhaps doing a quarterly newsletter that, you know, I mean, we have to kind of weigh the cost of it, but at the same time, if it's a need that helps us with budget and helps us with the community, understand that we really are doing a lot of things I think we're not, it might be something, maybe it's twice a year and it goes to every address. I don't know. But it might be something for us to, to consider in the future. Um, but that was something that was interesting to me and I, you know, looked at that. Um, you know, so again, weaknesses quite literally were the same thing as the strengths. Um, one of the things that we should, uh, have more oversight of what happens in the schools. Um, you know, and just to talk on that briefly, we often talk about, we are the oversight piece of this, of the, of the district, but we also have to define line of, you know, we can't cross that fine line of micromanaging the work that other people do and their jobs. Um, but I think what we can do with that is just keep working on our communication. I think if all channels of communication are established really well and strong and we, um, you know, keep working on those committees that we have and perhaps some smaller groups and not just, you know, find other ways to not just have a board meeting, um, as an avenue for communication. Another thing that came up, um, just to jump ahead a little bit, was the fact that parents do work and can't make the meetings and weekends, boards, you know, some boards do some stuff on the weekends for us to consider finding something we can offer on the weekends. We can talk about that as well. We have talked about it in the past, perhaps a Saturday, just a, you know, coffee chat type of opportunity for people to come in. Or maybe we could pick a topic once a month and have a discussion on that on a Saturday. But those would be ways to, I think, address that. Um, then we asked, the next question was, are we receptive to the community? Um, again, it was kind of split down the middle, quite literally. Um, you know, well, 47.8, 52.2, 52 saying yes, that we were receptive. And when I looked at the individual responses that we all did, we recognized that, um, it seemed like there were certain people that seemed very well informed and others who just, who disconnected. And so we're just gonna have to dig deeper into, you know, why that is and how we can improve on that. The third question was, would you be interested in participating in a board community forum? And then we had topics for them to choose and then to add additional. Um, 62% said yes, 38% said, uh, no. And everyone checked off the topics that we re-listed and then they added many more. I can say that, and people were able to choose multiple. School safety got 60%. Um, and building specific discussions got 48% and extracurricular activities got 39%. Um, school field maintenance improvements, 27. Transportation, 19. Those were the top, which was interesting to me, the top percentage getters. The rest were, um, under 10%, most getting like 2 or 1%, which was interesting. So curriculum and, um, you know, we just talked about residency, that was at 6%. Um, you know, 5% was around so, uh, student social and sensitivity training, um, academic standards. There were a lot in this kind of category of, of just, um, accountability with the academic standards and the staffing administration, talking about our rankings and that, kind of that category. And just checking the work we're doing versus, um, how we're reflected and how we proceed. And then from there, it, it really was, um, everything else that you can imagine. And they were, they were like, you know, 1%. So a few people had commented on drugs and jewelry and, um, student clubs, budgets, salaries, curriculum gaps. But it was interesting, like I said, that the ones that got the big percentages were, to me, that kind of says we're, we're doing good in those other areas. I mean, there's still always need for every category. Um, there was one person who did say that we should have a, um, form on the weather and, um, you know, how we call off on school, school calls, school days and the late things. And I get it, it's frustrating as a parent and someone who works myself in juggling that, it's frustrating. And the comment I can say to that now is generally my understanding is that it's not just our district, it's a conversation that happens with the surrounding districts and it's kind of unified decision. Um, there's not much we can do, you know, we can do our best to.
And it's a decision that's made to ensure that the kids are safe and the staff is safe, including people who are going home at five, six o'clock in the evening, not just people getting on a bus, you know, the kids getting on a bus at seven and 3:30. So, you know, and, and all the superintendents get together and it's sort of a, it seems like it's something that never goes away, but the decision is focused entirely on keeping people safe, so.
Yeah.
You gotta have a backup plan.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Yeah, whatever it is, like, I love your road, doesn't necessarily mean it's the same as the other jobs.
Especially in. Um, yeah, so, so I think when I was looking at this, um, with all the other information, and I'll go over the last two in a second. But, um, what struck me was it'll be good with the, um, when we sit down with our new superintendent, you know, to go over this information as well. I think it does kind of lay a little bit of groundwork that we can work with her on, um, topics that we can have throughout the year that we can address and perhaps presentations or just, it'll, it kind of gives us a little bit of a roadmap, map on how to address certain, certain things. Um, okay, the fourth item was, um, we asked about content and presentations at board meetings and were there recommendations and suggestions? Um, they, the few comments, this was a, were about having more presentations about kids, including kids and having them involved in our meetings. Um, and we do do a lot of that, but I think that we could look at, we were K-12 topics that we could cover for sure. Um, at times we look unhappy and disinterested. Um, that came up a couple of times. And so I think that says that, you know, perhaps for us, because the other issue that came up was, um, there are long meetings and presentations can get long. And, um, to be more efficient in how we manage the meetings. So depending on the time of year and the stuff that has to get covered on a timeline, we're gonna hit those few long meetings, but I think we can look at, um, that because it's clearly, it's showing on our bases as well. So, you know, we should, uh, address that. And then the last section was additional comments. Uh, that was probably the lengthiest section where, because everyone just kind of had an opportunity to say what they wanted to. And some of the key things that came up, um, were, so there were some great ideas. There were, you know, getting some people sharing their concerns or frustrations. Um, for example, you know, frustrations with legal constraint, constraints and information that we can share and we have stuff. And I think that, you know, we are all just community members that get elected and then we learn education law and are advised by council and we have to work within that framework. Um, so I, what that told me to, to some extent was, um, that we need to continue working on building our trust with the community because if they've elected us, there should be some level of trust in that vote that they cast. Um, and so if, if there's, if there's that frustration, that means there's a mistrust, that they're not trusting we really are doing what we're saying or, or not sharing it more. So I think that, um, you know, we can just work on continuing to build trust and, and I think that's just probably true for any board and any district that we face those frustrations. Um, and it's frustrating for us as well. So, um, but some suggestions were, for example, and I know it's come up before, uh, to livestream the meetings. There are parents who can't attend and they have to wait till it's loaded and then fund it. And that would be a way that people could, um, well, maybe listen on a drive home and watch, but, um, perhaps that or from home or whatever it is and making dinner. And, um, what I wanted to add, just to change the subject for, for a moment, so the, we are updating our website and that'll be coming out within months after, uh, Dr. Gallow gets on board, so she can have an opportunity to review and look it over as well. But I know that our site will be updated and, um, I had, I, I sent, requested that for our page, that a lot more information would be present. So very easy access to the videos, for now at least, if you choose to do livestreaming that, but for now at least have those videos there, the agendas. Um, and one of the things that came up in here was just another way to reach us, so there would be perhaps on our site, which other districts do right there, you can just type in. You don't have to go email, you can just type right in their question, concern or whatever. Um, and just other information or board manual policies, you know, all kinds of things, definitions of what is a board meeting, who can you speak, how does that work, work sessions. And as we figure out, maybe perhaps this Saturday, just those different things, people will really be clear on what it is. Because I think what's also frustrating, what, what showed itself in, in the survey, people feeling that they didn't have opportunity to speak and be heard and just, um, with the board. And the board meeting allows for a comment, but not much of an exchange. So I think if we identify with these topics and allow, you know, for those that create an exchange that's more interactive. Um, so then there are just a few other things to go over, so I'm not dragging you on perfectly close. Um, was, um, for us to have the board to be, you know, more visible, have more, more visits in the school buildings and, um, have more coordinated efforts. And I, I, I think we all agree, um, you know, we've in the past tried beginning year, end year, I think we could try to make it quarterly. Maybe it's not everyone, maybe we each pick a time of the year that looks better, but whatever, but we'll need to figure out how to make that happen because I agree that we should do that. Um, there was suggestion that, um, board members attend faculty meetings, uh, and, you know, be more involved in meetings that happen within the buildings. So, which could be a way to address one of the weaknesses that was brought up in terms of us not knowing more what's going on in the buildings itself more directly. And, um, and I think Dr. Gallow, you know, we had spoken to her, talked about how she does have committees and a lot more, um, you know, groups. And so we can go, I'm sure we can figure out a way to be more collaborative in that effort. And, um, this was another thing that came up a couple of times in different ways. Um, and again, it was about communication and it was just, I, how can I put it? So throughout the year, we have our board meetings and we comment on what we do at our committees. We, you know, you talk about what we need with different, um.
Senators.
Senators and.
Different people.
You're right. So, and we are doing work, we are out there, we're doing different trainings and all that, but it's, it's, you know, at different meetings, these things come up. So I think it'd be important for us in response to these, some of these communication comments, um, for us to have a summary, which was a recommendation, um, you know, maybe that, maybe that's quarterly, it's a letter from the board and it can be some sort of recap from that quarter. Here's what we've been doing, um, here's what's up next. You know, just certain things that comes directly from the board to the community and that could also help with communication information and addressing issues and, and clarifying the work we do. Um, and I think that was kind of, I mean, that's just a really rough overview of things. Um, and I, I can't do it justice wholly in this, in, in one meeting, but as I was looking it over, like I said earlier, what I was thinking is, um, I'd like to put together something that can go out to the community that's, you know, not, that knows we've, we put together from our work session and the conversations we've had, but it's just really clear, identifies the key things and then what we're going to do. And I think that'll help, so.
Will we consider doing this, like, again and maybe doing it? I mean, um, I think we should do it again. I think that, um, you know, a good number of people took the time and there were a lot of good suggestions. Um, so maybe it's something that we can do yearly.
Well, I think yearly would be good. I think it's also good to, you know, how did we do? You know, so for example, let's say it's maybe toward the end of the year, we get the comments, we put out our plan, graph or whatever it is, and they have that, that information. So we can ask legitimately, I mean, and it can be part of our goals, which would also be on our website, on our particular page, um, with the, the board goals specific to us. And, um, you know, we can have a community, you know, respond to the work that we're doing on their behalf and for the district. Um, you know, and there always is, of course, the case that, you know, we, we do our best and people, there will be frustrations along the way, but all we can do is address them and try to improve. So, but we did take this seriously and took the time.
Trivial.
It was actually one of our better work sessions. Um, yeah, so I think that's for me, if anyone wants to add anything or comment. No?
Give us a little bit of that.
Okay. Um, so we are going to move on to action items, but first we have public remarks, uh, specific to any action item, uh, in this section. If there are additional comments that do not pertain to the action items, you can, uh, please save those until the end when you have another opportunity. And, um, you'll have two minutes, please address the board. If anyone has anything, you're welcome to come up and use this time now. No? Okay. So we move on to action item number one, approval of non-union personnel salary increases for 2019, 2020.
Yes, this is a recommendation for the annual increase for non-union personnel salary increases, as we discussed in the second session, I was going to.
Okay, I need a motion, in a second, please. Kristen and Eric, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor. Motion passes, six zero. Action item number two, approval of 2018, 19 internal audit reports, agreed upon procedures, child nutrition focus area, facilities management and corrective action plans.
Yes, so our audit committee met on May 22nd to review these reports along with the correct action plans required to address any of the points made in the audits. They're being recommended to the board for approval, just as a reminder, we have, uh, quite a few audit requirements in the district. We have, uh, internal audit, uh, risk assessment, that's approved by the board in the fall. Focus area audit, that's approved by the board in the spring. An external financial statement, that's also approved by the board in the fall. Uh, currently we're under New York State Office of State Control.
Thank you. Need a motion, please. Glenn and Diane, uh, my second, and any questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor. Motion passes, six zero. Action item number three, approval of 2019, 2020 initial service contracts, A, Putnam, Northern Westchester BOCES, B, Lower Hudson Regional Information Center.
These are our annual agreements with BOCES, which allow us to participate in different courses, which obviously are, um, cost effective for the district because we're just, obviously saving also, it allows us to participate in certain programs like our career and technical education program, which the district will be able to perform.
Thank you. Any motion in a second, please? Karen and Diane, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor. Motion passes, six zero. Uh, action item number four, authorization to close inactive extra classroom activity fund ECAF accounts.
Yes, uh, this is a procedural requirement of our board policy that if a club is inactive for a period of time, uh, the club must be closed and it doesn't preclude the club from being reopened in the fall if there was participation.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion in a second, please? Glenn and Eric, thank you. Uh, questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor. Motion passes, six zero. Action item number five, approval of A, adjustments to year-end fund balance reserves, B, annual report of reserves, C, budget amendment number 15.
Yes, so each year, our finance committees, at the end of May or early June, I should say, to review our year-end, uh, fund balance projections and make recommendations for reserve balances, obviously viewed.
Obviously, due to this year is the availability of the TRS reserve, and the finance committee's recommending that board fund the TRS reserve up to the maximum amount permissible, as well as some of our other reserves. So included in the board agenda item is the schedule of reserves and those balances, again, which are being recommended in the board for approval.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second, please. Kristen and Eric, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Number six, approval of contracts pursuant to competitive bids, A, refusal, refuse removal, B, diesel, gasoline, fuel, C, drug and alcohol testing.
Yes, these are some of our annual contracts that we push forth for competitive bidding, and the responses are being recommended for approval.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second, please. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Number seven, acceptance of donation, Star Foundation for Star Scholarship Program.
Yes, we are fortunate to be the benefactor, or beneficiary of the Star Foundation Scholarship each year, and $75,000, I believe, is the donation to the scholarship program. So just huge thank you to Star.
Thank you. Motion in a second, please. Diane and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments?
Just a big thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Number eight, approval of policies, second, 7510 student health services, first, 7541 alcohol and drug testing of bus drivers and other safety sensitive employees, 6212 certification and qualifications, 7211 provision of interpreter services to parents, guardians who are hearing impaired.
Okay, Victor, great, we'll take that one. So these policy, the policy committee submits this for your approval after careful deliberation and discussion, and these policies have also been vetted by our attorneys.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion in a second, please. Diane, Kristen, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Number nine, approval of waiver of potential conflict of interest between Town of Patterson and Brewster Central School District.
So the Town of Patterson approached the district with an IMA intermunicipal agreement. However, in order for our attorneys to review it, because our attorneys also represent the Town of Patterson, they're requiring that both Town of Patterson and the school district adopt a resolution, waiver of potential conflict of interest, which would allow them to review the contract on our behalf. The IMA pertains to software collection, which is new, you know, collection software that they're putting in place for this upcoming September, and it just outlines the cost-sharing measure that we already have in place for our traditional tax collection process.
Okay. I need a motion in a second, please. Kristen, Diane, you're the last one. No, not yet.
Still got the consent agenda.
Questions or comments?
I don't know that it matters, but it does say, the resolution says that the waiver form is attached, and it's not, so I don't know if that's just something to fix, or necessarily.
I might be able to-
It appears we'll be able to vote on it, but just to complete the record.
So do you have to? You don't have to. I can attach it, once I find it. It'll take me a few minutes. If you want to table it, or-
I don't, I don't know, I don't think we need to table it.
We can just, we have to either table it or just-
Okay.
Please, now we can't go back, because it's the last one.
Yeah, I only have the single page of the attachment.
So, yeah, what does, does it delay?
So ideally, we would have had the conflict of interest approved tonight, and then the tax collection IMA approved at next week's board meeting. The Town of Patterson is approving it at their meeting, I believe it's tomorrow night.
Are you about to call a special meeting?
No.
He shot you.
Yeah, we do have an August meeting. I'll reach out to, well, we reorg, but the conflict of interest would need to be approved at reorg, which will allow the attorneys to then review the contract on our behalf. We can table it and get back to it later day if that's good.
Yeah, it all has to be there. Okay, so then I, actually, no, no, thank you.
I wish I'd noticed.
Yeah. So I need a motion then to, I need to, well, to table it, I guess, I, yeah. That was me, Carrie in a second. Glenn, all those in favor to table number nine? Passes, 6-0. All right, so now we move on to the consent agenda. We've covered some of the items earlier.
Yes, we have.
Okay, so anything else that needs to be added?
No.
Okay. A motion in a second, please, for the consent agenda? Diane and Kristen. Questions or comments?
Congratulations, students are still active. Thank you.
Four was in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Okay, we now move on to remarks. Board of Ed remarks, movie updates. Doesn't happen, anything we can ask?
Outside of graduation awards ceremony, all good things, it's been a very busy couple of weeks.
I'm gonna just add, with finishing up the year, being at the last meeting of June, just to comment on C-19, there were still a couple groups that we will get to, a video is our, you know, first time trying to work with this in a collaborative way, so, you know, we'll speak with the new superintendent and see how she wants to continue, and perhaps maybe even having herself with the groups that didn't get a chance to speak, you know, or meet within this school year. So just wanted to put that out there, and that's it for me. Public remarks. Does anyone else have anything? No? Okay, so move on to public remarks. Again, you have two minutes, you're welcome to come up to the podium, and please address the board. And you also may email the board, of course, at any time, at the end of the year, we'll start work. And we now have consecutive session. So I do need a motion in a second, for the purpose of finishing up our final year-end superintendent evaluation, and we will not be returning for any action. Just a motion in a second, please. Kristen and Diane, so, all those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.